Good morning, everybody. The emergency special meeting of the City of Port St. Lucie City Council is hereby called to order on August 30th, 2019 at 8:05 a.m. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Morgan.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Carvelli.
Present.
Mayor Orvac.
Present.
Vice Mayor Martin.
Ama'am.
Councilwoman Carvalla.
Ama'am.
It's not listed, but Madam Clerk, go ahead and start us off with the invocation, then the pledge.
Almighty God in heaven, we ask thy blessings upon those gathered here today and upon all the citizens of Port St. Lucie. Look with favor on our leaders and give them the insights, the wisdom, and the patience to deal with the problems and tasks coming before them. Bless their work and their deliberations. Amen.
Another pledge. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council and Mr. Mayor, for coming in so early. As the council members and all of our staff are aware, we once again have a potential hurricane that would be impacting Port St. Lucie. All of the tracks that we've been monitoring for the last several days show us somehow either directly impacted, impacted within 30 miles. The track today shows the storm, center of the storm dropping down a little bit further to the south in the West Palm Beach area. And the message that I would take away if I were a citizen is, we don't know where it's going to go. We do know that it's going to go somewhere along the, you know, between, you know, South Florida and North Florida. And every day, as we get new updates, because the storm is influenced by a lot of weather events, you know, that track can change. But it's been very consistent, east coast of Florida, historically for the last few days, zeroing in on the, you know, treasure to the space coast. Say, this morning, dropping a little further south. But assume that you will be impacted by a minimum tropical storm and maybe the hurricane-force winds and perhaps for a long time. The other thing that it's becoming clearer is that we don't know exactly when we'll hit to have the hurricane. It, you know, originally was looking like Monday. Now I'm seeing some reports Tuesday. The real answer is, we have to be prepared. So just like we would encourage our citizens to be prepared, we as a city organization, as a major service provider, we want to be prepared and ensure that all of our employees, our services are ready when needed by our citizens. So this morning, just a few moments ago, I signed a declaration of emergency for Hurricane Dorian. Under our ordinance, the city council has to affirm that declaration within, I believe, seven hours. That's why we have asked you to meet this morning, so you can affirm the declaration. It also includes that City Hall will be closed tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. You know, it's kind of another thing where you don't have all the right answers. You know, we want to close and make sure that we, because that's part of our, when our emergency declaration kicks in as well for city services, you know, if the storm comes Tuesday, that might have been a little too early. If it comes on Monday, it's just right. And so we'll make that determination. Your staff has been actively engaged all week. We have an emergency operation plan.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Before we get too far along, I appreciated your intro, and we're running live right now. We might lose some people along the way as we get into the weeds on the department. So I just wanted to take this time, as the mayor of the city, to deliver a message along the lines that you did. But it seems clear from the National Hurricane Center, we are going to have a tropical event. And so I'm asking, and I think the council is going to ask, for you to please prepare, please shutter or board your home to the greatest extent possible. Please make sure you have seven days of food, water, and medicine, so that you can be self-sufficient during the recovery period. And please stay tuned to the latest forecast and local news and cityofpsl.com/dorian, which is available to you to get the latest information from the city. But to your point, Mr. Manager, right now, that track is changing. Last night, 11:00 p.m., it had it going just north of Fort Pierce and pivoting north. At 5:00 a.m. this morning, it had it hitting Donald Ross Road and pivoting north right through the city, which would, of course, put, you know, the I-Wall and the worst concentration of storms in the city for a longer period of time. So that's going to change with every forecast, which hopefully everyone knows is, every six hours from the National Hurricane Center. So that's a great resource for you to stay tied into, including your local news. So it is going to change, as you pointed out, Mr. Manager, but it seems clear that we all need to prepare now and hopefully get our houses in order, so that then we can turn our attention to our neighbors, starting with our seniors and new residents, right? So this morning on NPR, they interviewed one of our new residents from Kentucky. So she talked about how with tornadoes, she went into her cellar and that she liked to watch them from the window until the last minute, until she ran into her cellar. Obviously, that's not an option in the City of Port St. Lucie, and that's not something, although we're happy to have her, that's not something that we're going to ask our residents to do, right? So please help seniors and help our new residents who have never dealt with a hurricane before. And let's stay tuned to that forecast, because as it tightens up, it's going to change, I think, our message and how we deal with it, and we'll get into that in more detail. But just want to be clear with that, Mr. Manager, that please take this opportunity to prepare your home now and to help your neighbors. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and we know that we, as a city, have a lot of responsibilities, but some things that we can't do is work on private property. And that means that you, as, that our private property owners need to take responsibility, be prepared for what could be probably a minimum tropical storm, but maybe a major hurricane. And so pay attention, watch the weather, but get prepared. So, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to go over a few things. One, City Hall is open today. All services are available. We have authorized liberal leave for our employees, so that they can go and clean their own, some can go and batten their own homes down. I have directed that, you know, each department will be open, but it may not be staffed at a normal level. And we would expect that, you know, our main focus is on delivering those immediate services. But all of our services and functions are open today. And as I noted, although it's a weekend coming up after 5:00 today, but we will be officially closed tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. Tonight, we have asked Parks and Recreation, because they have to prepare in case we have sheltering of any kind or needs, and they have to work to help get the rest of our departments and facilities battened down. We have asked and directed that they cease all public events this evening, starting at 5:00. So we know that's very traumatic, if you had an event scheduled tonight, or tomorrow, or Sunday. But, you know, we believe that you, that we need to look at the long term and get our organization prepared, so. Yes, please, Sherman.
Sherman Conrad, Parks and Recreation Director. We actually are going to go ahead and let our rentals and things go through tonight, and we're going to start as of tomorrow through Tuesday night. So we figured that we were okay for the rest of this evening, but it'll start tomorrow morning and then run through Tuesday.
And Mr. Mayor, Christina Prue is our emergency management manager. Christine has done just a really phenomenal job. Very proud of the work that she's done and all of our departments and section heads. So we follow the, what's called the National Incident Command System, which is the same system that St. Lucie County follows. It really identifies all the major functions that you would expect to encounter during a prolonged storm, but certainly as we head into the storm and during, and then with the recovery, we'll really try to segment what is needed by all of your employees. And so we have what's called the section heads here. Many cases, they're your department heads or your division directors. But I would, Christina is going to give you a general overview of kind of that NIMs policy and what, how we organize to be successful. And then we have each section head, if you have time, we would like that section head just to give you a very brief update of kind of what we're doing. But a lot of prep and a lot of work by your staff, so Christina.
Good morning. Thank you for being out here early this morning. Just to give a quick visual, this is National Weather Service, National Hurricane Center, NOAA. So this is right off the National Hurricane Center website. And as the mayor said, we continue to see a shift in, each time we look at it, it seems like we see a little bit of a shift. But just to give you an idea, and for the residents who are watching, so if our area is looking to get a direct hit, that's something that we absolutely want to prepare for, as Mayor Orvac said, and we want to make sure that we're being as safe and as prepared as possible, also knowing that the cone of error here can be anything from the very top to the very bottom. So a lot of times, I think residents think that that cone of error there is the entire hurricane, and that cone of error can actually just be the center of the storm. So it's important to know, as it shifts, that we can still be affected, as Mr. Blackburn said, by a tropical storm or anywhere up to a category four at this time.
And scale also, Christina. So I don't know if you know how far it is from here to Freeport by any chance?
Not at the top of my head.
It's about 100 miles. Less than 100 miles, might be about 80 miles. And then also, this track that you've presented has it coming right around Donald Ross Road. So from the C-23 on our southern border to Donald Ross, about 22 miles, depending where you pick it up at. So even there, at 2:00 a.m. on Monday, you're 100 miles away. And then with this track, landfall is 20 miles away, and then it's pivoting to the northwest, really north-northwest. So you're being impacted that whole time, and it's just important to, you know, we don't want residents just to focus on the center of the dot.
I think that's an extremely good point. Last night, the National Weather Service advised that we can be affected anywhere between 24 to 36 hours. So here in the city, our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, will be in lockdown, and we potentially will have staff in there 24/7, starting at the mark where we see tropical storm-force winds. So absolutely, it's important for hurricane preparedness at this time. As far as our protective measures that we've gone through already, as the city manager stated, and in front of you is the organizational chart for our EOC. And that is something that we have initiated this year to follow the national standard, which the county also follows. So we have different sections, which do different emergency support functions, and I will call up each of the section chiefs this morning, starting with our Finance and Administration Section Chiefs, Jeff and Steve. We'll just run through some of the protective measures that they have going on right now.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. For the Finance Section Chief, we are, for this finance section, we are preparing to get some money. We brought in some procurement cards, extended, or increased the limits on those. We're preparing to purchase. And as important as delivering the services, we need to keep good records. So we're working with staff to get the records, so that we may get paid back from FEMA someday. So that's basically what we're doing.
And what Jeff's comment about records is one of the most important things we do during this event.
Dr. Carvelli. Mr. Mayor, at this point, the state has declared a full statewide state of emergency, right, Mr. Blackburn?
That's my understanding.
So we're consistent in, if we declare our state of emergency, with securing possible reimbursements from FEMA. Possible.
Yes. We believe we're following all of the...
The protocol.
So this declaration is very important, because that's what triggers the potential to be reimbursed by FEMA. We know that, just to drift aside a little bit, it took us almost two years to be reimbursed by Matthew. We have, Irma is probably almost two years away now, and we've not received a dime yet for Irma. And so we are eligible to be reimbursed. We probably will be, but we don't know when. But it is critical, because what happens is, and what I've observed is, the federal government, which we're glad they're here, but they promise you, do everything you need to do, whatever it is, and, you know, there'll be some cost sharing. Well, what they don't tell you is, you know, the further away from the event they get, the more they send auditors in. And you actually get a different auditor every day. And so they're changing the standards. So it is very imperative that we keep really good records. And so everybody who's involved in the storm will be keeping time sheets, all of our purchases. And as section chief, you know, we'll, you know, we have a whole team of folks working on from, it started with prep, because some preparation is eligible and going all the way through.
Yeah, that's what I was making sure our alignment at the front end was good, and that's what it seems to be. So I appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager, I know you're actually going to be busy in getting 100 emails. I did send over an email from Florida League of Cities yesterday.
Yes.
They did have a webinar for record-keeping in regards with the chief.
I believe that Mr. Snyder participated on that webinar.
Perfect. I'm so glad you did. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because FEMA was providing instruction yesterday to the state as a whole, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Go ahead, Christina.
Bless you.
God bless you. And as I said before, with our new structure here to really push for emergency support functions, one thing that we are initiating today is our first Emergency Operations Center Team Meeting, or EOC Team Meeting. That will be today at 10:00 a.m. And we will continue with our department head briefings today that will be at 3:00 p.m. So continuing on the structure in front of you, the planning section is next. Our section chiefs who are planning are Renee and Carmen.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and staff. Carmen Capizuto and Renee Major is here as well. The planning section essentially will be coordinating with the operations section to develop plans and priorities. We will be getting those plans developed into an incident action plan, which will then be handed over to the logistics folks to get operations what they need. On a high level, we are coordinating with our Economic Development Unit to see which stores have supplies when they're getting restocked, and we're going to help put that out with communications as well during the storm. We do have some specifics here, if you wanted to get into those.
Thank you. That's so important, Carmen. I'm glad you reported on that. So as of last night, Sam's on US-1 was out of water. As of 6:00 a.m. this morning, US-1 Super Walmart was out of water. And with the alleged report that Pepsi was out of Aquafina, like at the warehouse. So I would appreciate it, Mr. Manager and Carmen, if we could get ahold of the distributors and also our major retails, like Sam, Super Walmart, Publix of the world, any of the large stores, because we need to get them restocked at least twice before the event. We really have to think worst-case scenario, so we're always dancing on the head of this pin of not wanting to cry wolf, wanting to keep people engaged, wanting to maintain our credibility. It's really important we plan for the worst in this case, and we're going to continue to keep the people updated. But if we get a direct hit of 40 mile or sustained winds, I just want everyone to know that that's much different than Hurricane Francis or Hurricane Jean, okay? Hurricane Jean, we were softened up by Francis. Hurricane Jean was a Cat III, 120 miles an hour, you know, just to the south of us. But 140 sustained, it's the difference between a toy poodle and a rabbit wolf. And especially at this speed of movement, we really have to be prepared, and we have to make sure that we've gotten all of our residents prepared with their seven days. And if they can't get water on Friday, and they're just coming into this and realizing how serious it is, they're going to see shutters going up on City Hall today, and, you know, they thought it was like all the other ones, because we got kissed, you know? We also had Hurricane Wilma, and Dr. Carvelli had 132.
32, 132.
So he had a big gust. That's not 132 sustained.
Brackled, yeah.
Tropical Storm Fay was a super soaker for us. Irma, we had tropical storm-force winds. Matthew, we were kissed by. This is a different beast, and we have to plan for that. And hopefully, it'll turn into a boomerang storm. It'll go, Mr. Blackburn's wish will be fulfilled of it, you know, dissipating magically, but we have to be ready for that. So it's on us to get ahold of those big retailers and make sure that they restock a couple times. Thank you. Dr. Carvelli?
Propane, there seems to be shortages of propane for refills everywhere I checked. You know, I'm hearing that, and the neighbors are saying it too, so. And then when I checked this morning, a couple places were out. So propane, the tanks, they're not, they're just not refilled and restocked. And water's the biggie.
We'll get information and updates on those. We have several already, the big box stores that you mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get that communication, where they stand on their restocking.
Okay, but that's, thank you, and that's a great point about the propane. Yeah, and I know that, I know that Sam's, Lowe's, Home Depot, and some other purveyors. Anything else on the procurement side that we're missing?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Also, in regards to, I'm also concerned about, I haven't seen any price gouging, but I want to make sure that when we put things out, if anybody observes it, they're able to report it. I know there is a hotline that the Attorney General has available, and that's very important. As well as food. I mean, I saw a picture on Facebook this morning. Someone went at 5:00 a.m. in the morning to Super Walmart to pick up non-perishables, and the shelves are completely empty in some areas. So not just water, but also food is also critical right now. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
We're getting actually pretty good reports from out west. So when communications puts it out, right now, out west, Traditionary and that, Sam's, Walmart, Target, Publix, they're pretty stocked out there, but we'll get specifics out, to get ever, get the news.
Okay, and just in addition, we have reports under different sections. Logistics can talk about volunteers and donations, but I'm here to speak about that if they need my assistance. And also, operations, Waste Pro and Code Staff falls under them right now, but Mike Lubek and I are here to talk specifics about that as well.
Does anyone have the hotline for price gouging? I have the insurance scams. I don't have the price gouging one. We have it on the website?
It's on the web.
So just go to cityofpsl.com/dorian, and you'll see that. Thank you.
And also from the risk management hand, we also have damage assessment pretty well underway. We got all the information out to the department's forms, making sure, again, documentation to go hand-in-hand from the FEMA and the insurance end, to make sure we capture every dollar that we can get post-storm. So we're already underway from that as well.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you to the planning section chiefs. Just a few things to note, too. When we were talking about propane, it really made me think of generator safety and how important it is for residents to remember that during a storm, it is not safe to run generators inside. And unfortunately, every time there is a storm throughout the United States, we do hear about unfortunate deaths from individuals who are running their generators inside. So please remember to be safe with that. Mayor, also, you mentioned the size of the storm in comparison. To give residents an idea, this storm is quite a bit smaller than both Hurricanes Matthew and Hurricane Irma. But sometimes, thinking of size, it can be important. But in this case, I think what's important to remember, although it's small, it's going very, very slow. And a slow storm has the potential to really just sit and hover on top of us with that extreme wind and rain, and really, really cause a great effect to our area. Renee had mentioned damage assessment. Our employees just this morning are going through the damage assessment training on the applications when they're out in the field. And in addition to that, we have an incident tracking application that GIS created, and that really is a great application to show residents online a lot of the specific incidents that are happening, whether they're down traffic signals, roadways that are closed, so on and so forth. So continuing on...
Christina, they provided me the price-engouging hotline. It's 866-9NOSCAM. So 866-9NOSCAM.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Carvelli?
Yes, Mr. Manager. Obviously, you've been a former county administrator, and we were in the county EOC, both you and I, over the years. The damage assessments immediately following are a critical point, when we're not doing it for financial reimbursement, but rather to assess. And you remember, right immediately following the storm, damage assessment at the county EOC helps determine what occurs in the county. And I know you've got the liaisons. I'm sure you and I talked, you're going to say something.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Councilmember. And that's a real good lead, and I was going to kind of end with the comment, but St. Lucie County, by state statute, is the incident commander for any kind of declared disaster. But the truth is, you know, because we're a city of almost 200,000 people, you know, they can't do all the detailed work. And so they rely on the city. They have an emergency operation center at the fairgrounds in St. Lucie County. We will have staff members there around the clock. They're going to start operating this afternoon at noon. Our EOC will go to a, what's called a Level 2 opening tomorrow at noon. But we, right now, our plan is to go to a full operation on Sunday, and certainly Monday and through the total time of the event. But we will be coordinating with St. Lucie County. But to get to the specific issue on damage assessments, we have a team that's, one of our sections is over damage assessment. Our building officials will be out, you know, immediately following the storm during the damage assessments. There's a specific way and information that's to be recorded. We will feed that information to the county. So they'll ultimately report that information. It certainly has value for us, but from a, you know, an impact overall to the county and various declarations, you know, the county ultimately will get that information provided by us, and they'll use it to provide a report to the state.
And that'll help them get response to us if needed through FEMA for emergency services immediately following, if we need it. You know, they've had drops brought in. Thank you, Mr. Blackburn.
And sir, I think that's a phenomenal point. We were specifically here talking about damage assessment, but when we have personnel that are out in the field, that really helps us to identify what our resource requests are going to be, whether it's through the state, through our mutual aid agreements here locally, or all the way through FEMA. So next on our...
I just want to address that point from the other side, I guess, the worst-case-scenario side, Dr. Carvelli, because we've both seen it. Different hats. I was the assistant city manager, you were school board member, or perhaps chair, where, you know, the city didn't get the level of response it needed in a timeframe. And it's our, at the end of the day, it's our job to make sure our people are taken care of. And, you know, it's one of those situations.
I was there when it occurred.
Yeah, and we're going to be ready for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the logistics section, our section chiefs are both Linda and Roger. Do you want to come up and just give some of the protective actions that we've gone through so far?
They would have gotten resources two days after they distributed it.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. One thing I didn't hear this morning so far, which I want to stress in terms of safety, is ladder safety. I know there was an elderly gentleman who died in Puerto Rico putting up some plywood. I want to make sure that all the residents take that extra step to make sure they don't take climbing up a ladder for granted. It's extremely important to climb very safely and not carry everything yourself and ask for help when needed from your friends or your neighbors. The ladder should be sticking up four feet above the highest level, where it's touching the roof. And make sure when you're walking on the roof that you're walking very carefully. So I just want to make sure I put that out there, because there's nothing more important than safety. I did, I was in the hospital a couple of weeks ago, and there was a fellow that fell off a ladder. It was a life-changing moment for him, so I just want to reiterate that. I know Mr. Bob Sweeney behind me and I are from Michigan. We're very clear on federal requirements for projects and documentation. I think that's been a little bit of the problem in the past, is the documentation and the auditing. And we're going to make sure that we manage through that with our departments. In terms of our logistics section chief, Linda and I are on, we've got, under our services in the EOC, we've got IT services for the staff there, communication. Linda's managing the sheltering at the Civic Center. Linda's managing the sheltering at the Civic Center, resource management, volunteers and donation and food and water. As Christina mentioned, we're meeting with those staff later this morning to make sure we detail that out. And just a little bit to let you know what Facilities has been doing. And the Fleet Division, we've been topping off all of the vehicles, making sure they're getting topped off. We've topped off all the generator fuel tanks on the water issue. We've had five pallets of water delivered from the county to our various emergency locations and for our staff and so that we're, we've got some water there. We're preparing, as the mayor mentioned, board up City Hall, PD and our other homes starting this morning. We should be done tomorrow morning, I'm hoping, if not earlier. And turning off of our fountains, our pond fountains. And I've notified all of our grounds contractors, our generator contractors, any contractors who are associated with facility work. We've ordered extra paper products for our emergency facilities and we're gonna be removing the flags as well today. So just wanna, Linda, does anything you may add?
Mr. Mayor and Council, just briefly, as far as the employee shelter goes, the staff has been meeting on a regular basis for the last 10 days or so and we are ready. I think, believe after this meeting, we're sending out information to all the employees as to what time the shelter will open for employees, their families and pets. And we're planning at this point to, to open at 8:00 on Sunday morning for registration. And we've got two pages of information going out to the, to the employees right after this meeting through HR and Communications. So we are ready. The Civic Center parking garage will be used for staging city vehicles as needed, as well as parking for employee vehicles that are coming to the shelter. So we're prepared. We've got food available through vending machines and through various other sources for our employees that are sheltering there and plenty of water on site as well.
Any questions for this section? No, thank you. Yes, Dr. Carvallo.
Mr. Manager, if, if they have to bring in a, like a FEMA response unit, do you have an area identified, like the Civic Center, where they can come and be based? Because that came up in '04, I think. That was one of the things about PSL question. So, and we didn't push it, yeah.
Yes, and we have identified if we had a Mass Care.
Mass Care, okay.
Yeah, would be located at the Civic.
Civic Center, okay.
We're, we're prepared.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just, just a reminder for everyone who wonders what the Civic Center is, it's more than just a parks facility, it's more than just a meeting facility. It is a shelter and recovery facility. And that was specifically included in the design following Francis and Jean in 2004, when we were giving out MREs and ICE from a Kmart that had blown away at the Village Green Shopping Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When people question the, the price tag or they wonder about what they're paying for, well, it's in times like this, we'll be glad that we have it.
One thing to mention in addition, the Communications Department and HR have sent out a survey for emergency childcare, should that be needed. We're still waiting on the results of that survey, but if that is needed, that's something that we're looking into providing.
For employees.
Correct, thank you, sir, for employees. And, and to clarify, as Linda did said, the, the shelter is our employee family shelter and that is there for our employees who are working 24/7 to feel that their, their families are safe while they're out working for us and for our residents. And our operations section, we have Kevin and Bob. Bob, would you like to come up and give us some protective action, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. Crews are out cleaning all drainage basins and lowering the basins and the canals. Right now, we're about a half a foot below our control point. We're gonna continue to lower those throughout the weekend until the winds pick up. All vehicles and equipment are all fueled up and prepped and ready to go.
Bob or Russ, have you also coordinated with the city's various community development districts?
Yeah, we've contacted all the community development districts. We did find that one of our canals west of 95 needs some issues, so we're out there taking care of that today as well.
Really appreciate that, because the people of Port St. Lucie don't care why they flood, if they're flooding.
You and I had this talk all week and the other one was the Water Service District. And Dennis Pickle has been contacted, Mr. Manager?
Yes, and I personally spoke with Mr. Pickle. And he will have two employees in the County Emergency Op Shelter. And he is working very closely with our Public Works team. He, you know, the, a lot of what he does definitely directly interacts with the rest of the city. And so, you know, he's, we've, I've got his, all of his phone numbers in my contact list and I know he's been working with Mr. Dutton and others in Public Works to make sure that...
The mayor hit the one on the head. The canal along 95 in Tradition was going up badly during the storm, as were the lakes and all the lakes back to, back to everything.
It backs up all the Tradition.
Yeah.
And you can only get so much water out when you have so much water flowing through. It actually blocks the water from coming out.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I personally did speak with Tony Palumbo, who's the, the Port St. Lucie manager for Matami, which now is the, the master developer for Tradition. He said, "We don't have to worry about it." He has it under control and he is, and then we did verify from their manager, who manages their facilities, the good news is we have a lot of connections there now. And they were going out and looking at every one of their control structures and this was Wednesday, so.
Really appreciate that, Russ. It's very important. So just to make sure this is translated, if you live in St. Lucie West or Tradition, you are covered by something called the Community Development District, which is limited purpose government. And a lot of people are familiar with it. In St. Lucie West, that's the Services District, it has its own elected board. Tradition also has one. Not, not every, not as many people quite know that yet about Tradition, because it's just a community coming of age. So they control infrastructure inside of their district, they control the stormwater system, it conveys into the city system. But the point is that we want to do as much as we can to coordinate with the CDDs, the districts, to make sure that you're safe during this event.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager, one, how are we going to give information to the public in regards to flood zones, if they're in a flood zones? Timetable on if potential evacuations come forward, when will they be announced, evacuation routes, et cetera?
Let's start with the last one first. The county, you know, will, will generally provide those, those evacuations if occurred. As you know, there's been a real trend and if you were, if you were listening last night to the governor, he didn't mention evacuations. I think what we have, what we have learned is as a long linear state, that evacuations don't work very well. And so the general approach has been to shelter in place, to go to community shelters if you're living in barrier islands, areas, if you are in flood plains. And so the, you know, that, it's really a different paradigm, I think, is that we're looking at is much more focused on sheltering in place. But the state will make some of those declarations, the county will make some of those for the unincorporated area. If we determine on it for specific areas in the city where we need to, that are very geographic specific to the city, we will have that information. We, we, certainly we have a website, it's our City of PSL Dorian specifically. So we have a, where we used to have current events, it's all Dorian. And so everything relative to that will be on our website. We also are on Facebook and Twitter with those announcements next door. If you want to get signed up for one of our newsletters, we're, we're sending out these Hurricane Dorian flash reports and some, some are specific to employees only, but we're also providing information, we'll, you know, get releases out to folks who want to get them directly. So we'll, we'll provide those announcements of evacuations, but they, they have to be coordinated, because they impact, in some cases, the whole state. And, but if there are specific areas, there's an area, an isolated area that has flooding that we didn't anticipate, there'll be notices that will come out.
Madam Carvallo, may I participate in this conversation?
Oh, I can.
Yeah. So I want to have a conversation about this and I hope to repeat my original comments at least three times during this meeting about our hopes for our residents of boarding up now, getting seven days of food, water, medicine now, and then staying tuned to the National Hurricane Center, their local news, and cityofpsl.com/dorian. And why I, you know, I hope that they stay tuned is because this track is gonna come into focus. And then once again, whereas the manager comes from a county background, I come from a city background. And I'm very concerned that if we get a direct hit, we will need to have evacuations. And to that point, Mr. Manager, I'd like to ask Mr. Risinger if he has some information that I asked for yet.
Mayor.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. I would like to get an update on what we're doing with our construction sites, how we're notifying the builders. There's been a lot of concern that I fielded yesterday over social media and with some phone calls. And there's especially certain locations where the bigger developments are going up with a lot of materials being out with roof trusses and boards just floating around the sites. And so the residents really need to know what we're doing to make sure that these builders and developers are buttoning things up for those sites, because they're really worried about the projectiles and flying debris. I can't even tell you how much I fielded yesterday with that specific thing alone. So if we can get an update, I would appreciate it. So thank you.
So Bob, if we could just put you on hold for a second, let's see. I have some specific questions for Jack relating to the building code. I'm building codes, actually. And I found out that Councilman Morgan is knowledgeable on this issue also.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As of yesterday morning, we did send out emails to every contractor in the whole city asking them to button up their sites. As of last night, actually driving around at 8:00 last night, I did see some of the contractors pulling port-alets and still doing the dumpsters, they're still pulling the dumpsters. So we have all of our inspectors going to sites and to ask them to clean them up. We even have a, our investigators also doing the same thing. A lot of the builders are responding. We, we are still doing very minimal inspections today. We're basically going to the sites and making sure they are buttoning them up, but they're, they can't get to all of them. And even the crews that pick up the dumpsters tell us that they cannot get to all of them at once. They're, they're trying their hardest to get everything picked up.
Mayor, so I understand maybe they're not gonna be able to get to all of them, because there's so many. The concern is the ones that have wood and materials that are just sitting on the site that become projectiles. So I don't know, you know, Mr. Manager, how you're gonna deal with this, but what I would like to see is between now and Sunday, just driving around and seeing, and I'll probably be doing it myself and reporting in, because there are, I know there is so much of it, these areas where we know that construction's going up and seeing if there's still a lot of material out there. We, we can't be in a position where people say, "Well, what did you do about it?" And we just say, "We're emailing people." And I know it's hard to get ahold of all these, because there's so many, but we, we really need to make sure if there's material out there, that we try to get as much of it up as we possibly can.
We are, we're even offering them suggestions on what to do, even if the, for instance, we're telling them on the port-alets, "Don't turn them sideways, don't stack concrete blocks in them, put them inside the garage if you can." Even if you strap them to the side of the building, some were suggest, some builders actually suggested they were gonna put, build dirt around them so they don't blow out. But there's a lot of ideas that were floating out there, but they're all aware that their sites are, you know, potential hazards and we are making contact, it's just not emailed. The email alert went out, is what happened. But we're also making actual contact by phone or physical contact with all of them. But that's our high priority, is for all those sites throughout the city, to make sure that they're cleaning them up. And unfortunately, there are some builders that are not even in the area. I had to make some calls yesterday myself and they're down in West Palm and I can't even get ahold of them.
But, so to this point, and it's actually, these issues are dovetailing. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any authority to go on to this private property and move any debris on the outside of the building, inside of the building, so it's more secure?
Under normal circumstances, I'd say no, but with, what, that's part of what the declaration of emergency is for, is for us to provide for that public safety.
So I think, you know, to, to the Vice Mayor's point, once we do everything else we're supposed to do and we have the resources, we need to attack this issue. And I don't know about the, the rest of the council, I'm often asked, "Hey, what is it like to be mayor?" And the simple way I like to explain it is, it's like being the, the head of a really big family, a family of 200,000 people. And so you love and care about that family and you try to look out for them. And when people ask me for my advice, I just tell them what I would do under similar circumstances. So this is me as a homeowner. If I'm next to a building site and I'm worried about it, I'm, I'm boarding up my house, because whether it's the two-by-four from the construction site or the tree that fell down on top of my car and the limb broke off and blew towards my window, I want my window to be safe so my shutters are up. But I took a photo of the building site, so that I can deal with it afterwards and make sure that any, any liability was, was taken care of. And I would contact the city. And then I personally, just as a resident, you know, the manager, the attorney, Renee, they won't like this, but as, as a homeowner, I would move the stuff inside the, the garage of the home being constructed and make sure that it was as, as secure as, as it could be. And honestly, I've done that for every storm in Port St. Lucie since 2004, including as mayor, at least twice, two different events. And now also, so that's on the issue of the debris, but for me, even the larger issue than that, is the reality of what this storm could be if the worst-case track comes to be. And that's the building code issue. And so my concern is for those older homes, the GDC-type homes, frame homes on the east side of town, Jack. So do you have any guidance on the building codes?
Yes, those houses, most of those houses were built underneath the Southern Building Code, SBC. And at the time, the, the code was approximately 100 mile an hour, depending on what zone you were in. So they really didn't come up with the wind speed zones until after Andrew, which at the, after that time, they came up with a Florida, a uniform code for the whole state, the Florida Building Code. And, and that even only increased it to, starting with a 110 up to 130. So up until just a few years ago, we then increased, we've been increased up to 150. So any of those houses that were built in the early 70s and 80s are probably 100 mile an hour wind. So, and this is the reality, Mr. Manager, and this is, this storm is different than, than past storms, because we're getting so many tracks that include us. My concern is that we'll have a direct hit at 130, 140 sustained. My concern is that the city of Port St. Lucie, to a large extent, knows what Francis and Jean was like. Well, Francis and Jean, again, Francis Cat 2, Jean Cat 3, we had significant roof damage across the city, especially with Jean. We have blue tarps up for, I mean, years in, in some cases. So I think that was 120, you know, when it made landfall. So what's 130, 140 like sustained? That's, that's gonna be devastating. And so I think it's so important to encourage our people, who, our residents who live in, in perhaps older homes that were designed to a lesser wind standard, to please stay tuned. Because what I'm gonna ask the manager and the police chief and our staff to do is, as the track firms up and we have a greater, we have a greater likely, we know where it's going, greater likelihood of direct impact, I think that we should encourage, you know, at that, at that point, I think we're gonna have to order an evacuation to a shelter or to your friend's house. And so going back to, hey, I'm, I'm the mayor, I look at it as a family, right now, I'm, I'm asking, "Please board up your house. Seven days of food, water and medicine, stay tuned." And why stay tuned? Because right now, I would like the people of Port St. Lucie, if they live in an older home that wasn't designed to current standards, I'd like them to be thinking about, who could they shelter with that lives west of town in the new house? Inland, they only just say inland, so you know, it's, it's easier to conceptualize. Inland, new home, current, current building code. Because there might come a time where if this track firms up or a direct hit firms up, where I don't think it will be safe or we would want people, and a lot of it's in your district, ma'am.
Mayor, if I may comment on that?
It's, the floor is yours. Thank you for allowing us in.
I, I agree with your earlier comment where the state knows the state, the county knows the county, and they have their responsibilities to oversee all those, those areas, but we know our city. And I would like to even, with the knowledge and all the institutional knowledge that we have combined as a team, kind of almost have a prioritization of that if and when necessary, where, you know, we already have those lines drawn out that we know that these older homes are here and that if, if, and when if it ever happens, that we have to go that route. You know, we can at least give some sort of direction and some sort of radius of what that looks like. Because we, because, Jack, you know where those... Because, Jack, you know where those homes are. We all know where that's at. And so, I think that's also very important. But yes, it is, a lot of that is in, well, all of it's in my district, pretty much. And we want people to be safe. And if the order does come from the county and, you know, you're asked to evacuate, you know, all I ask our city as a whole is if that comes to your doorstep, please do not stay. Do as you're told. Evacuate if necessary, if that comes down the pike. So, Mayor, also, one more thing I wanted to get on the record in case someone didn't see Facebook. We do need to discuss yard waste, people disposing of items outside their home past a certain time. There are places to dispose things if you have to do it, if you didn't get a pickup. I got a lot of phone calls yesterday from individuals saying that yard waste wasn't picked up. They may not know what their scheduled date is. And we're already past that point, I believe, for those types of pickups. So, can someone please update the community on that as well?
Mr. Lubek will be providing that update.
And just to the evacuation idea, we'll have to go with generalities, I think, at the time. East of US 1, east of the river. But my fear is 130, 140 sustained wind speed and what that would do. Because so much of eastern Port St. Lucie, especially around the hospital, I could just, of course, I know what Andrew was like. You know, I was at the University of Miami. My wife was in Cutler Ridge. So, when you think about the devastation of forecasted 140 mile an hour storm, that's what you're talking about.
But just so people don't assume, what I was thinking more in terms of is making sure we have mappings and visuals for people to understand where those locations are. And then, that way, when we post them on there, not only do we say east of US 1, but we actually have visuals if you live in this particular area, you know, kind of situation. Thanks.
But people of Port St. Lucie, I want you to be thinking about that now, right? I want you to get your house taken care of. And then, on Sunday, late Saturday or Sunday, you're going to be able to make the call. You're going to have a better idea of where the storm's going. But you need to have your plans, your contingency plan set now so that you have somewhere to go and you have the best possible situation for you. If you can hang out with your buddy Jack and his house that was built to 200 mile an hour winds and you have an in-the-ground generator and you're going to be playing Playstation and poker the whole time during the storm event, that could be more fun than being at a public shelter. So, make the best possible plan now for you. But to Russ's point, we don't want everyone stuck on the road when there's an event. So, if your house is safe, shelter in place. But if your house was built to the old code and you're going to have 140 mile an hour hurricane, make alternate arrangements now. And hopefully, it'll boomerang and you won't have to worry about it.
Just in case any of the citizens have a concern on which, where was the old code after? It was before 2001, so that they'll know.
It's good to know.
And Councilman Morgan, did you have any other input on that? Because I know you were in the building materials business and...
He's said it all.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mike Lubek, Assistant Director of Neighborhood and Services. Just to give you a little update on yard waste. Yes, we have been receiving complaints about people still cutting debris and putting it out there in large quantities. We currently have four locations, four self-serve, where people can bring debris if they've already passed their yard waste day. Those locations are Whispering Pines, Lynn Gate, Sportsman's, and Machesney. That's where the four locations are right now. We will have staff there for people to bring their debris, yard debris only. They'll be there till five o'clock today, from seven to five today. And also, tomorrow, we'll be there from seven to one o'clock. The landfill is closing at three, so we wanted to have a two-hour window so people, so the dumpsters could be brought up and taken care of. Waste Pro, our hauler, has nine vehicles currently out dealing with just yard waste alone. Code staff is also out there assisting. And when we find small debris piles, we're doing what we can to get those addressed and taken care of and brought to these self-serves. We're going to do our best to try to keep up with demand. We're advising citizens to not cut unless it's required and if they do, to bring them to themselves serve. So, we are doing our best to address those issues. But we'll probably be dealing with this all the way up until the event like we have in the past. We're just asking, please don't.
Mayor, Mr. Lubek, so let me just make sure, because you talk fast like I do. So, I want to make sure the public heard. Till what time today?
Till five o'clock today at those four locations.
And then, the cutoff completely is at 1:00 PM tomorrow at those four locations, correct?
That is correct.
And then, what is your advice if they don't make it to the one o'clock? What do they do with their yard waste to be able, or anything like that? What do they do to secure that to ensure that the safety of the public and of themselves?
Our request is they secure it as best as possible at their location. The landfill will still be open till three o'clock, but I would ask them to...
The garage, where? Where do you recommend?
I would ask them that they put it in their garage or in an area where the wind would not pull it out. Sometimes you have those little enclaves on a property.
Garage. Put it in your garage. Bring in your cans.
Tie it together.
Bag it in a nice contractor bag and put it in your garage till after the storm event, along with all of your loose patio furniture or anything in your yard that can blow away.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
I was pretty much finished up with the questions. But I would like to point out that we do have a floodplain map on our website.
Can someone get this guy a new shirt? I'm looking at a Spartan.
I'll take a Miami shirt, but...
I'll get you a nice PSL one. Yeah, he won the bet, so, yeah. But we'll go PSL.
Hey, any questions?
Any, well, actually, I got a question for you. And that is, what are we doing, or perhaps, Mr. Blackburn, sandbags this year?
Mayor, I know this answer's not universally loved, but we have not found that sandbags work. And so...
No, it's really not loved at all because you're changing a 15-year practice at the time of an emergency. So, for nothing else, you know, this is a terrible time to change the practice when people are so concerned about protecting their property and their lives. So, you're telling me that we can't do, help yourself, or do it yourself, or anything? You're just going to cut it this year at this time?
So, we had a lot of discussion about this. This is Irma. We did ultimately give out sandbags at Irma. We, our highest priority is to get the city ready, to get the city facilities ready. We, and certainly having our people available and rested as much as possible. We don't recommend sandbags. You know, and we do have, I don't know if we have sand stockpiles, Bob, that could be available. But again, we wouldn't recommend them.
Mayor, if I can ask a question on that?
Sure.
Just because I'm not, that's the first time I've heard that. So, I want to make sure I'm educated on that appropriately. So, are you, and I hate to use this analogy, but it's the only analogy, I think. Are you basically essentially saying that sandbags are like the new tape on the window theory where it doesn't necessarily work?
That has been our experience. So, unless you're prepared with your sandbags to put extensive roof tarps in, mix them in, cover them in so that you're making a wall, they're not going to keep the water out of your house. You know, if you're in a very low-lying area that you know water seeps in, then a combination of bags with tarps may help you. But the water just seeps through and under the sandbag. So, they're really, you know, we don't recommend it.
Being a child of South Florida, it's just the first time I heard that, so I just...
There's a lot of great information out there now that sandbags really help with more of running water and not standing water. And that's something that we're trying to educate residents on. It also becomes a major issue after the fact when they stand there and they're standing in water and it can become hazardous waste. And then, Bob, I know that he had something to add.
Yeah, they can, you know, also, when they break up, they can clog our drainage systems as well. So, there's a multitude of things, reasons why we didn't choose to go with sandbags this storm event.
So, it may not be a matter of arguments and ultimately conclusions. It's a matter of timing and communication. So, I'd like to communicate that to the public at the beginning of hurricane season as part of our Storm Prep Expo and setting the expectation, not when people are naturally feeling panicked and/or wanting to do something. Because it's actually good just for people to engage in construction action, constructive action leading up to a crisis, so, to keep them engaged. So, it's disappointing, the timing and the lack of communication for me. You may very well be right on the merits of the argument, but this is not what I want to tell the citizens now.
Mayor, so I agree with the timing issue. I completely understand the merits, like you're saying. But yeah, we should have done a little better job notifying people. I did see, in monitoring social media, I did see people asking about sandbags. So, maybe we can just put something out so people know. Because I know that over the next couple of days, more people are going to be asking. They're used to going to the Public Works facility and getting their sandbags. So, if we could just let our residents know that we're not doing that and also give some reasons why, because they're going to say, "Well, why?" That would be really helpful.
Absolutely. And over the last few days, we have been educating residents of that. We will make sure at the beginning of every hurricane season to have that posted and to notify that. And we can put some educational information on our city's website as well through communications.
Mr. Blackburn, so I'd like those talking points ASAP because I have outstanding requests that I wasn't able to answer till I got this answer. And now, I'm going to give them whatever talking points you provide me, as provided by the city manager. I'm going to ask that any other future changes in policy relating to storm preparation and response occur before the storm.
Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of phone numbers that we want to make sure that people have available. So, our emergency operations center call center. The phone number is, so this is for the community, 772-873-6382. So, today, if folks have a question, just call in our normal information line. We're open till five and we'll answer those calls.
I didn't want to put it out there until it's live.
We'll be live as soon as we activate the EOC.
Right. And so, tomorrow at noon, it'll be activated and will be available. The State of Florida Emergency Information Line is 1-800-342-3557. So, we have both of those lines. Certainly, you know, we will have employees manning the City of Port St. Lucie Emergency Operations Center line, I'd say, starting at noon tomorrow and through the duration till the storm is over.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
So, I just want to put out there, because we don't have representation from the Fire District here, but we have two board members here. So, yesterday, the Fire Chief let us know that he is preparing to staff all 17 fire stations with two shifts of firefighters. Command staff will be assigned to the County EOC and the Fire District's Operation Center on Milner at the Fire District Headquarters. So, for anyone who's interested in knowing what we're doing on that first responder side, and I'd like to ask the chief to come up and talk about what the PD is doing. And also, can you also explain to, for people, so they know that once the wind speeds hit a certain point, that there will be no response, that the police officers and all first responders will be stationary? So, that's very helpful for people to know so they're not out driving around and trying to see what the storm's doing or going to the beach, so...
They do that. They do.
I know.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Vice Mayor is absolutely right. There comes a certain point during a response to a storm that it becomes unsafe for us to respond to calls. I really don't want to talk about wind speeds because I do still play it on a call-by-call basis. But after tropical storm-force winds, responding to routine calls for service will not occur. We have provisions in place to respond to emergency calls up to the point where it just becomes totally unsafe to be on the road. Have been talking with the sheriff about curfews and that kind of thing. We really do not want to implement curfews because it's very... Life today is very complicated. A lot of people have a lot of very important things to do. And if you have legitimate business, most of it will be to support the storm and storm recovery. We just don't want to just throw out a curfew and put up roadblocks. On the flip side of that, if people are not responsible and they're acting irresponsibly, then we're going to have to have that discussion. So, at some point, if the mayor's very correct on this is not, the potential for this is unlike anything we've ever seen in Port St. Lucie. I've been with Port St. Lucie for 25 years, been through all the storms. I also was deployed to Andrew. And I can tell you, there's, the Chihuahua and the wolf analogy was very accurate. There are hurricanes and there are major hurricanes. And a direct hit from a major hurricane is a game changer. So, we're going to be meeting daily, all of us, the partners. And I really appreciate the fact that you're talking about we need to be self-sufficient. And that goes all the way to, down to the individual households. Every individual household needs to do a little history and look at what could potentially happen and make their own decisions, come up with their own plans. But as long as we're all doing our, taking care of ourselves and then we're taking care of the city and then we're taking care of the county, we need to remember that if it's bad, we're going to be relying on resources from all over to come in. And so, we need to be thinking both ways. We need to take care of ourselves and we also need to think, how are we going to coordinate, you know, with other outside entities if they come here? So, we currently have been meeting with the County EOC for a couple of days now, drawing up our plans. We've been meeting with the city. The PD has been meeting with the city. You'll notice we're kind of off in our own little corner on the flow chart. That's because we do what we do. We respond to emergencies. And this is just a bigger emergency. So, we're going to be supporting every one of those section chiefs with anything they need as we move forward. And we're just going to keep coordinating resources and responding to what comes up.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's important for everyone to know.
Dr. Curbelli?
You know, you get older, you start saying it as it is sometimes, you know? Mr. Blackburn, you know, sometimes we all remember there was some history with the EOC and the city over the years. And I think that's all been erased due to the cooperative working relationship. But just from a practical standpoint, having been in the old one up by the airport and down here at the Midway Road one, I think it's critical you put some really good folks there in the rotation, that the folks realize they have to stress that we are a very big city and our needs are different than the city of Fort Pierce with 28,000 folks. Everybody has different needs, obviously. But when we need to press for things we need, it's in larger quantities and larger scope. So, the folks that are present at the County EOC, having been there, know we can't just give a report and say, "We're doing great. We've got our own EOC." But hey, by the way, we need this, this, and this in the recovery. And we have to press very hard because of the mentality, having grown up in this community, that we're just not going to retreat to the neighborhood and we got ourselves covered. But, yo, we're a big part of this county. So, when operations for recovery have to be based, they need to be based here. When the large trucks need to arrive, as the mayor was saying, they need to arrive here. There's no reason other parts of the county can't travel to our area to get recovery supplies as needed. Because I've been through the big ones. You go, I was in South Carolina, and you go, and it was bad. But there's, this is a time when the county does recognize that we're a big part of them. And just want to make sure our people stress our needs are critical as the biggest city in the county by far.
Mr. Mayor, and I, you know, we are very aware of that and we're going to make sure that we get all the resources we need. And, you know, I do have Mr. Graham, Ms. Rabeling, and Teresa Marsarnos will be rotating through at the EOC. I'll be going up there periodically for many of the events. Christina goes there. The chief is there. So, we'll be well-represented. But we also know that our work is here.
Yeah, I understand.
And so, I want to make sure that we, that it's very easy to get caught up in the, all the things and discussions that go on at the County EOC, which has a lot of different elements moving, and not pay attention to Port St. Lucie. And that's what we do.
I understand.
Pay attention to Port St. Lucie. You brought up a good question. I was going to kind of finish with this. There are some functions that the county provides. They're by statute, we don't provide. We don't provide shelter. The mayor really did a great overview. Is you individually, you as a citizen, you as a homeowner or resident, a renter... as a homeowner or resident, a renter in Port St. Lucie, you need to decide, you know, where do you feel most safe during a major event? There are, I think, three shelters. Christina, you may have the names and locations of those. For the county shelters, there's also a special need shelter defense center that I believe is opening tomorrow. And we'll make sure that's clear. We will have all the shelter information on our website. But that is, and then the other service we don't provide is transportation. The county is responsible for providing transportation to the shelters. And so if you're a special needs individual, you know, we will have information on our website, but the county's website also has all of that information. So, you know, we are more tactical as a city, generally.
Locally, yeah.
We're certainly providing for our infrastructure. And we're going to make sure our infrastructure is in great shape. We're doing everything we can. I hope you heard this morning, been a lot of forethought about how do we make sure our infrastructure as a city, and that includes the police, you know, is functioning well for what could be a major event. But there are some services, you know, that our citizens may need that are provided by the county. We'll make sure that we've got contact information.
And one last thing. I think it's important during the press briefings, if you could get the press briefing schedule that's done at the EOC, whatever our message is can be very clearly coming through our avenues as well as the coverage they get from all the local media that are there to cover it. So, thanks, Mr. Blackburn.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
One thought. So I know we're not doing the sandbags, but is the county providing them? Does anyone know if the county is, our county is providing?
We've not heard that.
Just for any comfort level that our residents may have, because we're county, St. Lucie County residents. So if they are, and people, even though we put out our message, if people still feel comforted by going up and getting them, and maybe that's an option too, is to let, if they are, to let people know.
We'll certainly identify if they are providing.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I know, I hate to go back to the water situation, but it just jogged in my memory. I know that Ms. Roden is out in the audience. Should we tell our citizens about the water quality, that they can use their tap water, fill their bottles of water, fill their tub, et cetera, et cetera?
That's a very, that's a very good point. You know, I've heard a lot of really good suggestions of, you know, fill up bottles of water, put them in your freezer to keep your food.
We have great water in the city of Port St. Lucie. Water wars.
Drink our water. And Brad, Brad, tell us about our water. And how long is it going to be good for?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, yeah, that's one thing we do want to get across there. We're making preparations to make sure the tanks are full prior to the storm. But we want to emphasize that we want everyone to conserve their water, especially those that are on grinder systems. You know, you, once the storms come in, power is going to be gone. And at that point, the amount of storage that you have in your grinder system, that's what you have. So minimize water use. Don't do your laundry during a storm. You don't need to fill your tub. If you do, there's a chance, if you empty it, you lost all your storage. So that's just very important. Some of those with whole house generators, if they have their grinders connected to them, different story. But I think the vast majority of them will be out. As far as the rest of the utility systems department, we've gone through the exercise of making sure all of our fuel tanks are full at the treatment and pumping facilities. And then we also have, we're staging generators at critical list stations throughout the city. And right now, a lot of our concentration is on post-storm coordination, working with crews to get out there and start pumping grinders down. So that's where our focus is right now.
Do you ever go automatically to a boil notice app when the event's started?
Yeah, unfortunately, we feel the system is pretty secure, but DEP in the past has made us do a.
Just because if there's a break because a tree went down?
Just in case, right. Just in case, just to, just as precautionary. And then we get that, we've been able to clear that up after the storm has cleared. The one issue that we have to be aware of too is that the ground is already saturated. So that's where we have to be careful, you know? If there's a lot of winds, more rain, trees toppling over, that's our concern. We don't want, you know, any water main damage.
But as far as conservation now, I mean, you're fine with them filling up all their containers, filling up their bathtub, putting two drops of bleach in it so they can have it if the worst-case scenario hits?
Worst-case scenario, that's fine, but just don't drain it into the sewer system.
No, if you put in your tub, hold it there till electricity's back on. Use it.
And I don't know how tactfully you say it, minimize how many times you flush your toilet. Do everything you can to just hold the water back.
Yeah, so to your point, whatever free board you have in there, that's it. That's what you have until the power comes back.
You have a 200-gallon tank, but you don't know where that level is when the.
Right now. That's right.
Right.
And Brad mentioned generators and staging those, and continuing to mention the great partnerships that we have. The state through the county did provide the city 38 generators, which we will be staging with our utilities and our code strike team after the storm, as Brad said, to pump down those grinder stations.
And I must say, I appreciate the support we're getting for putting these crews together. I know code enforcement has given us quite a few volunteers, and there's more volunteers out there waiting. But as we put our plan together, we'll expand the amount of crews that we have going out there.
Mayor. Dr. Carveli?
Blackburn, once again, FPNL, you know, they're a critical factor in all this when they shut down portions and reopen them. And I'm sure you guys will be well aware of that.
And we'll certainly provide that information on our website. We get, you know, this kind of event, and particularly the, if our, if we're hit with a major storm, which we, you know, surprisingly, we met with folks from the National Weather Service in June, I think. And he emphasized for your staff that Matthew and Irma, when they hit Port St. Lucie, were tropical storms. And yet, we saw the vegetative damage we had, and we did have some folks wood damage. But, you know, a major storm, you know, could be a different story. And so we have to rely on all of our partners. FPNL is certainly a major provider. We'll have their contact information, their emergency hotline numbers on our website. All of our outreach will have that information. The county, for the services the county provides, and St. Lucie West Improvement District, all of those are our partners in coming through this as well as we possibly can. And I think we're prepared. But, you know, we're not alone in our community. There's other service providers as well.
Mr. City Manager, the Emergency Management Division does have a call today scheduled with our rep from FPNL, and we'll continue to keep good communication with them throughout.
Councilwoman Carbio, did we address all of your utility concerns there?
Yes, we did.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to chime in and give you the shelter information that we have so far from the county. The following shelters will open at 3:00 PM on Saturday. Lakewood Park Elementary. The Fort Pierce Central High School will be for the county and constitutional employees and their families. The Treasure Coast High School will be open to the public. And the Westwood High School is also open to the public, and that is their pet-friendly shelter that we have. And then there's another note here too, that a soft evacuation of the Barrier Islands is tentatively scheduled for 3:00 PM on Saturday. All of that information is being put onto our website as well too. So as we get new info in, we're posting it, we're sharing the appropriate links as well too, so it's in one central place for everyone.
So get your house taken care of now. Be thinking about contingency. Stay tuned.
Yes. And if anyone would like the county's emergency line, that is 772-460-Help. That's 772-460-Help, which is 4357.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to follow up as well. We were talking about flood zone maps. Currently, the city of Port St. Lucie, on our main webpage under Services and GIS Maps, we do have a flood zone map there. And what we'll do is, with the Communications Department, we will also provide a link today on the website for the FEMA flood zone maps for a broader area. I also wanted to mention that the city's emergency contractors are all on notice currently. And if we give notice to proceeds, that's going to happen in the next 24 to 48 hours. So that includes debris management, our emergency hauler and monitor, our emergency catering contractor, and janitorial contractors for our staff as well. In addition to that, I just wanted to mention, we mentioned generator safety, and I know how important that is to all of us. It's important to note also that, following a storm, residents love to go out and see the damage. And it's so, so important, and we urge you to make sure that you're being safe with any high water and driving your vehicles through high water, looking for downed power lines, and making sure to really be aware of your surroundings. On the city side, we'll continue to focus on our protective measures and our protective actions. And we just continue to urge residents to have a great plan for their homes, their families, and their pets, but to really reach out to their neighbors too, to be a good neighbor and to try to help one another whenever possible.
Mayor.
Yes.
On the note of just all the different things that we should be thinking about and calling on the public to be safe, this particular resolution and declarations discuss alcohol sales and how the city manager has the right to stop alcohol sales at any point in time. You have hit on several times that if this is a direct hit, this is going to be very different than we've ever seen before. And so I just want to put a caution out there. Many times, you know, we see on Facebook these hurricane parties and people stocking up, and here comes a hurricane, it's time to have a hurricane party. You know, ladies and gentlemen, if we do receive a direct hit, this is a real serious situation, just like, you know, they say, "Drink responsibly, play responsibly." I'm going to ask our citizens to please, please, please be responsible. You need to be able to be vigilant in the situation. You need to be able to really be focused on what's going on at your home, with your family. And then post hurricane, you need to be ready to be on, to deal with whatever you need to deal with for yourself and your family. And so I'm not trying to be a party pooper in this situation. If, you know, we're all going through our own things in our own home, and we all have our ways of dealing with it. But at the same time, I don't want people to get hurt because of a situation where they consume too much. So please, please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You, Dr. Carveli was right. You do not want to be intoxicated if your roof is flying away. Or my wife's experience in Andrew was their roof flew off, and her grandparents had to put her and her cousin in the bathtub and put a mattress over the top of them. So no, you don't want to be intoxicated in a situation like that. So we've seen that our team is very prepared. They're working hard to take care of our residents. Mr. Manager, do you need to read the declaration into the record?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Do you need to read the declaration into the record?
I don't believe so unless.
That's not a requirement, no.
Not a requirement?
I would ask one thing, and I don't know if Mr. Blackburn was going to say it, but as part of the declaration, if you look at paragraph E, and it's the one we added, states when regular business will be closed. If whichever council member does make the motion, if you would include in that the authorization for the manager to amend that closure time if it's deemed necessary. The storm is still very unsure of when and where it's going to hit. So if you could afford him that flexibility, if he wants to move that up or move that back.
Well, the declaration is his, right? So that's all he needs to do is write that in right now and then sign it, and that's his declaration, right? And then we'll have our resolution basically affirming his.
Correct.
Is that right?
That's correct. Can I ask a question? Are you saying to amend where 8:00 AM the closing, Jim? Yes. Give him the authority. The declaration is, you know, he's signed, is signing it now. It's when you affirm it, yes, the closure, that 8:00 AM, which he has now designated Saturday morning, 8:00 AM is when the normal city operations will cease. We would like to give him that flexibility.
How about he just right now writes in, "Or as may be determined."
Yes.
That would work. As best determined, yeah.
So if you'll just underline that in your hand. I don't know if you've even signed it yet. Had you signed it?
Yeah, yes.
So then you could initial that.
But I didn't, yes, I didn't write the time I signed the, "Or as may be determined by the city manager."
All right, so I can just keep all the trains on track and on time. So now that's been done?
Yes.
That exists? That document exists? You've declared an emergency in the city of Port St. Lucie for Hurricane Dorian.
And I'm asking you to affirm it.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Actually, well, what I'd like to do is, that declaration's his, he doesn't need our approval for that. So now I want to go to item five and have, is that okay if I do that? You're fine with withdrawing the motion in a second? I'm going to ask the city clerk to read Resolution 19-R80 into the record.
A resolution of the City of Port St. Lucie, Florida, to declare a state of emergency in the city of Port St. Lucie, authorizing the declaration of a curfew, authorizing the restriction of the sale and possession of alcoholic beverages, authorizing the exercise of emergency powers, providing an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No? Madam Clerk, please state the motion, call for a vote.
Motion is for approval of Resolution 19-R80. Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Carvali?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Orvach?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Carbala?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Are there any members of the public here to address the city council? Any public to be heard today? Any agencies out there that wanted to address the council? No? Council?
Mayor.
Ma'am.
I want to say that to all our residents, you should all be very, very confident in our city team, in the professionalism and the emergency planning that our entire team is undergoing. So please know that, please stay safe. And we've heard several times about making sure you're prepared. So please, please heed that warning. And everyone stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Dr. Carveli?
Mr. Blackburn, I want to thank you for getting the staff organized for anticipation of a major event and having a plan in place. I appreciate it. Christina, thank you very much for all the hard work. I keep hearing throughout the building that you're involved with everybody. And thank you to all our staff, because I know you're sacrificing your own time and your own family's time to be here to help the citizens. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Morgan?
It's pretty much all been said. Be safe, be smart, be patient, be nice.
Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Councilwoman Carbio?
That's exactly what I was, I agree with that, but prepare, don't panic. Now is the time to put that into place. I'm glad you said, "Be kind, be nice," because I've seen it over and over again. They actually had a newscaster, a newcast report down south, I think, where this woman just got off the car and started helping the gas station to direct traffic. She was there for five hours and didn't get a penny. See where you can be helpful, see how you can help your neighbors, help your seniors. You know, put yourself, put your, like they say on an airplane, put the oxygen mask on yourself, but as soon as you get that oxygen mask, start helping those around you. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's a great metaphor. And so today, I'm sure, and Russ has shared that he's encouraged this, everyone on the city team needs to take care of their house and their family today so that we can take care of our city family for the next few days at least, and heaven forbid, the weeks and even months ahead. That's what we're dealing with here. So I want to make sure that we properly recognize the threat without inducing panic. But we have to recognize the threat, right? So we've said it a few times, but we're going to say it again. We want you to take care of your house today. We want you to have seven days of food, water, and medicine. And then we want you to look to your neighbors, starting with seniors and newcomers to Florida that have never dealt with any hurricane, let alone a category four or major hurricane. All right? And then we want you to stay tuned. We want you to be following the official track. We want you to be following your local news. And we want you to be following cityofpsl.com/Dorian, because this track is going to firm up, and we're going to get a better idea of exactly what we're dealing with. If we are dealing with a direct hit from 140 miles an hour, sustained winds, it is like nothing we've ever seen, and it's on par with something like Hurricane Andrew. All right? So Hurricane Andrew removed Cutler Ridge and parts of Homestead, right? No trees left, no roofs left. That could happen. That's what we have to have an eye on, and that's why we have to prepare now. Make your contingency plans. If you were. If you were, if you are in a house that was built pre-1980, pre-1992, pre-Miami Day Building Code, pre-Florida Building Code, and your house is only designed to withstand 110, 120, now is the time to be thinking about where you will go Saturday, Sunday, if it's coming right for us, okay? Make those plans now so you can be ready, and you can have your family in the best possible situation. And then we will be ready to the extent we can. We will have gone by this whole book. You heard it from staff. They're going to go through this book, but if 140 miles an hour comes here, we all have to rely on our own personal preparation until it's safe to get out, and then we're going to start the long process of recovery. But we're going to be with you the whole time, and we hope that we can continue to be able to communicate to you for as long as we have electricity, and then we'll be on the radio. And so that's why that weather radio and that radio is so important, and I guess we should add that to our list, that please make sure you have a battery-powered radio. Let's really prepare for that worst-case scenario. Mr. Manager, anything else you'd like to say?
Mr. Mayor, your last summary is really good. We're going to communicate throughout. We have a really top-notch communications group. We'll be sending out Facebook, live Facebooks, we'll be sending out regular communications until all the power goes down, and then you're exactly right, what I've seen, having been through these before, is a point where your radio really is your friend, and so we'll be on radio as well.
That's right. Don't forget your radio.
Yes.
All right, and are we going to have any regular updates? Are we timing them, or we're just going to produce them?
We'll have updates to you after every one of the county update, emergency management centers, and we hear the state, where you get the state update, we'll provide updates to you at those times as well as when anything significant occurs.
All right. Do you want to set the expectation for the public that, I mean, you'll hear from us as we have new information, but you'll always hear from us at this time every day, or?
Well, it's not going to be time-specific. It'll really depend on the battle rhythm with the county, so we're going to follow that. But then, of course, if there's anything urgent, anything that we need to communicate instantaneously, we will do that right away in between all of those set times. Once we get into the EOC and we know more, we will follow the county, and then it'll be a little bit more regular that we can then communicate. Next one will come at 3:30, or the next one will come at 7:30.
All right. Councilwoman Morgan said it, everyone, be prepared, be safe, be kind, and we'll be talking to you very soon. Thank you.[1741.86][1741.86][music][1742.86]